Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz and I'm the Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of September 2nd. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on cell phone channels 29 and 329, and it is also streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. I'd like to thank Executive Director of SMC Mark Sarah, as well as IT Director Brian LaRue, who help us each evening, each meeting, as we bring these meetings to you. Before we begin our meeting this evening, it is important to note that last Thursday, our community suffered a tragedy. Zoe Wolfis, a Shrewsbury High School student, who was a member of the junior class of 2020, 2022, excuse me, died by suicide. On behalf of the school district, the school committee, we want to offer sincere condolences to Zoe's parents and her brother, who attends Oak Middle School, as well as her family and friends. The death of a young person by suicide is shocking in a traumatic event, and our community is grieving as we seek ways to support Zoe's family, friends, and one another. At this time, I ask you that you please join me in a moment of silence in memory of Zoe Thank you. Now Dr. Sawyer will comment on some of the steps that the school district and the community has taken in response to this tragedy.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I also want to offer my sympathy to Zoe's parents and brother, her family and friends, and to all in the community who are grieving her loss. After news of her death by suicide, the Shrewsbury High School Crisis Team has taken several steps to support our student and parent community. These have included immediately sending a message to families to notify them of the death, provide resources regarding supporting grieving teens, and offering counseling at Shrewsbury High School immediately last Friday and Saturday, which some students accessed, and continuing to offer counseling either in-person or through Zoom to individual students or groups of students who wish to talk. They compiled a list of Zoe's friends and other acquaintances and connections at Shrewsbury High School, and others who might be particularly affected, and reached out directly to those students and families to offer support. The entire Shrewsbury High School staff met together to process the situation. Mr. Bizidlo, Todd Bizidlo, the principal of Shrewsbury High School, who sent an email to students stressing to them that each of them is deeply valued, that the school is available to help them by talking and supporting them. Just prior to this meeting, earlier this evening, a webinar entitled "How to Talk to Your Teen About the Death of a Peer by Suicide" was held with Dr. Larry Berkowitz, an expert from the Riverside Trauma Center, who specializes in helping communities deal with the trauma of a suicide, and we had about 325 people on that webinar. Tomorrow and Friday, Shrewsbury High School students have been invited to come to the main entrance of Shrewsbury High School between noon and 3:00 PM, where they can sign a scroll with a message, which the scroll will be then presented to the Wolfis family, and the high school will continue to send out resources for students and families regarding suicide prevention, and continue to work to determine how we can best support everyone involved. I do appreciate that the Wolfis family is being open about their daughter Zoe's suicide, which helps remove the stigma that can become associated with this, and helps us to best support our students and our families at this time. I appreciate everything that the Shrewsbury High School Crisis Team has done, and they will continue to provide any support that they can, as will the team at Oak Middle School in order to support Zoe's brother. It is certainly, as was stated in the webinar, all of us in the community certainly are grieving this loss, whether we knew Zoe and her family or not, and we will continue to work together to find ways to support the Wolfis family and to honor Zoe's life during this very sad time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. First on the agenda is public participation. No one has asked to address the committee this evening, but if anybody wishes to do so in the future, please email the committee at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. Next is Chairperson and Members' Report. Does anyone have anything this evening? Thank you. Next, the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Just want to mention that many people know that our staff returned to work on Monday, August 31st, so we just finished our third day out of 10 days of training that we are doing collectively as a school district to prepare for the reopening of school for students, which would happen on Tuesday, September 15th. I'll speak a little bit more to some of the things we're doing in the first report, but I just wanted to thank our staff, who are working very hard at this, what needs to be done to prepare, and particularly thank the leadership team, who are going so far above and beyond, and have been for a long time now, in order to try to provide everything we need under an extremely demanding situation, that obviously has been compounded by the recent tragedy that we've suffered as a community. So, and then we'll talk more about that in the reopening update. That is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. As Dr. Sawyer mentioned, our first item on the agenda this evening will be an update on the reopening plan for the 2020-2021 school year, and again, Dr. Sawyer and District Administrators will provide us with this new information.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I'll begin again with the same key messages that we've been sending. First, that the health and well-being of our students and families and staff is our first priority. Our focus for this coming school year is to develop a safe school environment for our students and staff that prioritizes everyone's well-being and enables high levels of learning for all, and that we are planning, of course, based on guidance from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as well as including the medical experts they've engaged with in the Department of Public Health, while closely monitoring the latest information from those medical experts and the evolving data regarding the pandemic, both in Massachusetts and in Shrewsbury specifically. With that, I've been sharing this data each week. This is the newest seven-day positivity rate that's tracked by the Coronavirus Resource Center at Johns Hopkins University. It's a good news story for the state, where since last Wednesday, when I last presented, it was 2.05%, is now down to 1.65%. So that's a good statistic for us collectively as a state of Massachusetts. The next slide shows the key statistic that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has been, is utilizing and suggesting that school districts utilize, which we plan to do, as one very key metric relative to whether it is, the risk factor is such that going back to school in person is warranted. Any community that's labeled in a green or a gray shade, it is, the department encourages to be having in-person learning, at least in a hybrid model, and I'm happy to report that Shrewsbury remains in green. The 14-day cases per 100,000 that was released just this evening around 6:00 PM is 1.6. That's a very small amount from last week, I think it was 1.3 perhaps, and over the last 14 days, the case count for Shrewsbury has been nine, which is 0.6 cases per day. A week ago, it was 0.5 cases per day, so virtually unchanged. Again, a very low number that we're pleased to see. The other statistic that we've been asked to consider when thinking about our schools and opening is the 14-day positive test rate. You can see that over the past five weeks, it's gone down from 1.23% for Shrewsbury, down to 0.49%, so it's been continuing the trend downward, which is again, another good news story, and I do appreciate what everyone in the community is doing, to mask up, to physically distance, and to wash their hands, use hand sanitizer, all the things that we know help avoid the spread of this virus, which puts us in a position where we will be able to, you know, barring some very significant unanticipated change, be able to reopen schools for students the week after next. As I mentioned earlier, our staff is back to work. These are just some high-level summaries of the work they've been doing over the past three days. On Monday, we had a universal training for all of our staff on one single webinar around health and safety, presented by, primarily by our Director of School Nursing, Noah Freeman, but also a number of our administrators as well. In that afternoon, for each of the levels, elementary, middle, and high school, Ms. Freeman, with other administrators, answered staff questions through a Q&amp;A session in a webinar fashion as well. So that was the focus in getting back into the work on Monday. On Tuesday morning, we had our more traditional opening day staff meeting, albeit virtually via Zoom, where I spoke, Ms. Fritz spoke, gave greetings as the Chair of the School Committee. Mr. Gary Chalmers, the President of the Shrewsbury Education Association, our Teachers Association, spoke, as well as Norrie, Ms. Norrie Christie, who is the President of the Shrewsbury Paraprofessionals Association, and after that, each of the individual schools had their opening staff meetings to welcome new staff and orient staff to the work that would be happening over the coming days and weeks. That afternoon, we had an entire district-level virtual seminar on staff resilience that was presented by Dr. Kim Kuziak, who is a Shrewsbury resident, former Shrewsbury Public Schools parent, who has been longstanding practicing psychiatrist, treating young people, and who also, more recently in her career, has been working directly with schools, and she was, spoke to the staff about resilience, and how that works under stress, and you know, all the different effects that the pandemic are happening, or having on people generally, and how we can build our resilience in a variety of ways through healthy practices. That was followed by another virtual seminar for all staff that was put on by, through the mindfulness initiative that we're engaged with through Shrewsbury High School. Jenny Maddox, who's our mindfulness director this year, did an excellent job, again, presenting some opportunities for staff well-being that were connected specifically to a practice of mindfulness. This morning, there was school-based training in various protocols, and then this afternoon, there were department-based organizational meetings that took place, and there'll be a variety of these types of things that are happening as we, again, prepare our staff to welcome students back, or to be serving students who will be learning with us remotely. Next, I wanted to mention, I wanted to thank the Shrewsbury Public Buildings Division, Keith Baldinger, who heads that division, for his assistance. We've had independent third parties, two different engineering firms, who have been doing assessments of each of our schools relative to the ventilation HVAC systems. Five schools have been, as of this morning, have been completed and reports received. We will post those reports on our website under the School Committee Materials web link, where we post all the materials from tonight's meeting. There's three other schools that are completed. We're expecting reports tomorrow for the remaining. The good news is that our schools' systems are in good shape. These firms also were able to make minor repairs as they went through the audits. There's others that are ongoing, being provided either by contractors or our own public buildings' staff. Again, the systems are working as designed. Though, you know, one glitch of note is that there is a rooftop unit at Parker Road Preschool that, it was discovered, needs to be replaced, and there are four non-classroom spaces at that building that are served by that rooftop unit. We will relocate the staff who would have been working in those spaces. We're able to do that based on the space we have available there. That'll probably be an eight-to-12-week repair, just it's a unit that has to be ordered, and we know there'll be some lag time in that. But I do want to, you know, thank the Parker Road staff for their flexibility, first off, but secondly, just recognize that this is exactly the kind of commitment we've made, that if we have a situation where the ventilation system's not working properly, you know, we will do what is necessary to ensure that we're providing spaces that are ventilated properly, and make the repairs as soon as we can to get things back on track. But overall, it's a good news story for the school district. Next, I wanted to update the committee and the community on where we're at with the choices that family made. We did have a deadline. We did extend that deadline due to the situation we had, we're dealing with at the end of last week. You can see the statistics there. For most schools, there wasn't a significant change. There was a small percentage uptick, maybe 1% or 2% in most of the elementary schools, moving towards more remote learning, all remote learning. The most significant change was at the high school, which went from about 20% choosing all remote learning to 14%. Went from about 350 students down to about 267, who are choosing that all remote option. And, you know, later in the agenda, Ms. Clouder and Mr. Bizidlo will be presenting some information about the remote learning program for the high school as well, just to make sure that we're answering some questions people have had about that. But, you know, other than that, the numbers held fairly steady. You know, it is something that is posing a challenge for us, because we're essentially trying to run now sort of two different school districts at the same time, one that's all remote, that has almost 1,900 students in it, and then the other that has about 4,200 students, that's in-person, but on an alternating schedule. So it's an extremely complex planning process that we're going through. Excuse me. I did want to mention that we continue to have staffing challenges. I mentioned this last week in my update. This has been due to the ratio of how many families have chosen remote to hybrid. We lose some efficiency there, but we have made some progress. I want to thank Barb Malone, our Executive Director of Human Resources, all of our principals and directors, assistant principals, who've been working very hard to get candidates into place. We've had, been able to hire a number of long-term substitutes, who are credentialed licensed teachers, to fill in some of these gaps. Some of those have been internal promotions, that from someone who was licensed, who might have been working in a paraprofessional role. Others are people who had applied for positions with us. It is, we're also dealing with a few last-minute resignations. Some of those are paraprofessionals that we're moving forward ourselves. Others may be finding teaching positions in other districts, and this time of year, we tend to have some resignations of paraprofessionals anyways, for moving to different positions, other places, potentially. But lastly, around staffing, I just, we have never seen a market like this, where there is just an extraordinary level of competition. Every single public school district is trying to hire people, and so it is a seller's market when it comes to, if you're a credentialed educator, and we're doing our very best. I feel fortunate that, in a couple of cases, you know, people have indicated that they've chosen to commit to Shrewsbury because of our reputation as a place where someone can practice their profession in a way that's supported, which makes us feel good, of course. That's a competitive advantage for us in some ways, but, you know, there's lots of other terrific school districts around here as well, and certainly, it's a very big challenge right now to try to procure adequate quality staffing to start the school year. We have some operational challenges as well. I'd say first and foremost right now is the placement of students. Now, you know, we have been working on this, of course, and now that some of the decisions that families have made are finalized, relative to which mode of education they're choosing. We're finalizing assignments to classrooms at the elementary level, teams at the middle school level, the overall course schedule for high school students. This is highly complex work under normal conditions, because we need to connect special subject scheduling, the scheduling and the support around special education for students who require those services, and coordinating that. And now we're doing this work across four dimensions. You know, a cohort of students who are there virtually every day in Cohort A, who are high-need students, relatively small percentage of students. The students who are coming in the hybrid model in B and C, which are the alternating, some are there on Mondays and Tuesdays, the others are there on Thursdays and Fridays, and are learning virtually together on Wednesdays, and then the students in Cohort D, who are in the all-remote program as well. Some of the all-remote classes at the elementary level are actually, because of the numbers, might have students from multiple elementary school zones in them. So again, this is just beyond anything we've dealt with, and I appreciate the work that our administrators are doing to put this all together. It is very, very demanding work, and we're trying to do it, obviously, in a way that sets our students up for success to the greatest extent possible. It'd be pretty simple just to, you know, alphabetize kids and put them into sections, but our principals and assistant principals and everyone assisting them with this knows that how we put these class cohorts together makes a difference for how effective we can be with them, and so they're putting time and effort into that. And so I appreciate people's patience and flexibility with that. And then, that's my, I would also like to talk about our capacity challenges that goes with that. There has been a massive amount of work that we need to complete in a compressed timeframe, and I think that, you know, anyone who has paid attention to the work we do, has experienced the work we do as a school district over a long period of time, we have a staff, and we have a leadership team in particular, who are accustomed to doing a significant amount of work, often under deadline pressures. This is unlike anything we've ever had to do, and I don't think that there, people would perceive that there's a culture of complaining around, you know, the volume of work we have to do, and that certainly is not my intent. What is my intent is to just signal to everyone watching that this is a massive undertaking, and we have, we only have so much capacity. So we are triaging, we are prioritizing to the extent that we can. Obviously, health and safety issues are the first priority, and, but it will be an imperfect start to the school year. That is something that goes without saying, but we are trying to get the most important things as right as we can. Other things are going to have to get filled in as we go, but everyone is working to their very maximum, and I appreciate that, but I also need to monitor how that's working for our staff, and particularly right now, our leadership team, because, you know, we can't have a situation where people are burned out and can't continue as we need to undertake the important work as students return back to school. So with that, I am asking the community, both our families, our students, our staff, everyone, for their continued patience, their continued flexibility, and their continued grace as we undertake this very, very difficult challenge. But we will do everything we can to make sure that we're providing the best education possible under the circumstances we face. So with that, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Karen Isaacson, who's our Director of Extended Learning, because we do have an updated recommendation around the Extended School Care Program, and I think this is just another, in a nutshell, you know, an example of how, you know, new information continues to change the landscape of what we believe we can or cannot do as a school district. So with that, I know she has some slides to share as well. I'll turn it over to Ms. Isaacson.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. I'm here regrettably to recommend that we suspend operations of the Extended School Care Program until such a time that school is able to open fully 100% in-person. So far, 443 students have withdrawn from Extended Day, and that was as of yesterday's count. I've had more withdrawals today that I have not been able to keep up with, but that's an additional 115 students just since I was here last Wednesday. Our average daily enrollment is down 75%, and the projected revenue for that remaining 25% will not cover our costs, even with the significant fee increase that you approved last week. There are not enough families on the waitlist to fill those vacancies, and it feels like we're out of options at this point. You know, here's a, here's a brief view of the budget showing a loss of $13,000 a month, because we now have 237 students who are only attending two days per week. This is a budget based on three employees per site, which I feel is really critical for safety. Even if I cut that down to two employees, we'd still be operating a loss of $5,000 a month, and that is assuming no one else withdrew in this next period of time. Given that, I gave families a deadline of September 11th to withdraw, and we've already seen this many people withdraw, I anticipate there will be continued withdrawals. A lot of families have reached out, saying they were undecided, you know, a lot of indications that this will continue to go down. I estimate we'd need at least 100 additional students just to get back to the break-even point. I looked at our waitlist, immediately 90 people on the waitlist have already chosen remote learning, so they're not an option. Of the 130 students remaining on the waitlist, I mean, if I just kind of look at, as an average of the number of people who have withdrawn already from ESC, I'd expect a high rate of declining spots when they're offered, so I do not have any confidence that we'd be able to fill the spots from the waitlist. You know, last week, we approved this rate hike, but in talking to parents and reading their emails, I mean, the primary reason they're not coming is they selected Cohort D and they're learning remotely. Second is that parents are working from home right now, and they, they don't need the childcare, they're able to send their child home on the bus. These are sort of ranked in the order of inquiries and messages I've received, in that some people are concerned about exposure to students who are outside of their own particular classroom, they'd be joining classrooms, and a lot of other families are concerned about the limitations we would have to our program when we offer it, without the same sorts of robust enrichment we usually do. Very few people came forward to say we're withdrawing because of the cost. It is really just not a tenable situation at this time for so many reasons. And so I am, you know, given that we just cannot operate at a loss, and that there's insufficient revenue to cover our expenses, I recommend we suspend operation of the Extended School Care Program until school is able to reopen at 100% capacity. As I said last week, when we reopen, all families are able to take their spot back at the schedule, their preferred schedule. There's no waiting list, there's no fee to hold their spot, we are simply going to suspend these operations until we're able to be back fully in-person, and at that time, we will review our tuition and with the intention of bringing it back down to its original rates, not at this 60% increase.
So based on the vote the committee took last week, we don't need any additional action from the committee, but we felt it was important, especially to be able to notify the families so that they can try to obtain other childcare, those who were planning on using the Extended School Care Program. I want to thank Ms. Isaacson. That's obviously an extremely difficult recommendation to make. She is incredibly loyal to her very hard-working and talented staff, and has really worked tirelessly to try to figure out ways that we could keep the program afloat. We knew already a large number of the staff were not going to be needed, given the shrinking of the program, but at this point, obviously, the program not running, we will have, that's going to be essentially the entire staff, with the understanding that, you know, we're trying to move people into positions that we have available as paraprofessionals, some of the operational COVID positions that we have available. We would obviously like to retain these excellent employees. You know, we have them on a furlough status through the time we're going to make a decision through the beginning of October, we'll continue that, and then we'll be, based on who was able to find other positions with us, then we'll be making a decision as to who we need to shift that furlough into a more formal layoff at that point. That pains us, of course, because we hate the idea of not being able to continue to employ excellent people. So with that, I would suggest if the committee has any questions, particularly from Ms. Isaacson, we take those first, and if the committee has any questions or comments about the information I presented, you're welcome to ask those questions as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on what we've heard? Lindsay?
I know the entire leadership team has been working so hard, but I also just want to thank Ms. Isaacson for all of the work. I mean, there's, we've seen you try to move heaven and earth to figure out how to make this, make this happen, and if we move over here, and we pull this lever over there, and it is, it's a real tragedy that this is, this is a program that we can't have functioning now. We heard from many parents who are essential workers, who told us how they're relying on it, and we were trying to figure out how to make it work. My youngster got off the waitlist and was going to start, and so, you know, I personally am feeling, feeling the loss, as are many other parents in the community, but it's hard to say who it impacts more, because you have wonderful staff as well, and so it's just, it is just a tragedy all around, and we all just sort of wait for, to get through this phase, and hopefully get ourselves back to normal, but thank you for all of your efforts, and thank you to your wonderful staff, who have been waiting in what I'm sure is a terrible limbo, as we try to figure out what we could do to keep this great program going.
Thank you. Jason?
I just want to echo Ms. Superintendent's remarks and a lot of the feedback we've heard from parents around the issue of Extended Day. There are obviously very strong, very positive feelings about the program, that obviously stem from the work that you and your team have done for years now. I feel enormously sad for the, any families that I know were hoping to utilize Extended Day and communicated to us in no uncertain terms that it's an incredibly valuable and incredibly helpful service to them. I certainly feel terrible that we're not going to be able to meet that need, but the only thing that I could think of that would, that is worse than not being able to operate the program, is if we were to delay this decision and leave families in a situation or even further down the road, they were faced with needing to find an alternative. So sad as I am to see us take this course of action, I do appreciate you keeping a close eye on the numbers, and certainly keeping the superintendent up to speed and, and moving quickly when you realize that this was where we were headed, because I do, again, I do think it is best that families be notified of this decision sooner rather than later, so thank you.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, just patience, flexibility, and grace, I think, should be the motto for this year. One day at a time, I think, appreciate the presentation that Dr. Sawyer provided on the opening. I think, you know, we only have so much of a frame of reference as to how this year should work, right? We don't know. We don't have anything to measure it against. None of us have taken, you know, school in a hybrid model, right? So it's, it's important that the community be patient with, with all of us, and I appreciate Ms. Isaacson staying on top of this. I think, you know, several attempts were made to keep this program, you know, for obvious reasons, but within feasible means, true, so, but appreciate the update.
I also want to thank you for the update. I think as a working parent myself, and a former user of the Extended School Care Program, it was a lifesaver for my family and a wonderful program, and it's, it's hard to see us have to kind of put it on hiatus, but I'm glad that's what we're doing. We're not saying we're not, we're done with this, we're going to put it aside, and when we can make it work, we will, and I agree with Jason. I think for working parents, the sooner they know this, the better, so that they can look for alternate plans. So thank you for trying everything you could to get this working. And I just also want to comment what Dr. Sawyer said about the amount of time. I spoke to it yesterday, when we had opening day with staff, especially the leadership team here. The amount- The amount of work that they've been doing and the layers of details that they're continually having to adjust is tremendous. I've never, in my 13 years on this committee, seen anything like this. And it is a lot of stress and anxiety for them, and I hope the public realizes just how much they're putting into reopening schools and making sure that this is the best possible way we can do it for staff and students and families. So thank you to everybody in this room and anybody who's watching that's been part of this. It's a ton of work. I still can't get over how much you're all doing in such a short amount of time. And again, patience and flexibility and grace, like John just said, we all have to practice that, because we're going to move through this, and it's going to be bumpy probably at some times, but we're going to get through it together. So thank you. Anything further on the update, Dr. Sawyer?
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to move on to a presentation from Ms. Clouder, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, as well as Mr. Todd Bizidlo, the Principal at Shrewsbury High School. And they are going to give us an update on the remote learning program for SHS Cohort D.
Thank you very much. Nice to be joined this evening by Mr. Bizidlo.
Thanks for having me. Smile on the air.
So as we talk a little bit about tonight, I want to go deeper into some of the learning platforms that we began to talk about last week and focus specifically on what that learning experience will be for high school. And that's because at the high school level, unlike the other levels, students will not be taught by Shrewsbury educators. And so there's more questions and concerns about some of that, and I hope to at least address them this evening in some of the details we share. So I want to begin by just reiterating our assumption that when we think of Cohort D students, those are our students, they're Shrewsbury kids. And so for that reason, we want to be able to structure the experience so that they're main connected to their school communities, including connecting to, you know, extracurricular activities as clubs, academic teams, athletics, to the extent possible allowed by the new regulations. And many of these opportunities will be offered remotely. And so it's a good fit in terms of what these kids are going to be experiencing from a learning perspective. The second is, you know, we have high expectations for all students, and course content in the remote model will be aligned to state standards, just as it would be in the in-person model. The DESE has made it clear that the time on learning expectations and also the rigor of what students experience will be increased dramatically this year over last spring. And so I just want to remind people who may be concerned because they're thinking about the experience of last spring and remote learning going forward, that somehow this is a watered-down version of instruction. That's not true. And finally, students in Cohort D will be taught by different educators than teachers instructing in the hybrid model. And although it's our first preference to have Shrewsbury High School faculty teach students who are in the fully remote program, the vast majority of families opting for the hybrid model means that between the schedules that are resolved in the number of kids in the full remote program and the needs of the hybrid with social distancing, it's just not something we have the capacity to offer. It's not that we didn't want to try. When we looked at that, and I think I spoke to that last week, trying to think about, were there any sections that could be smaller or combined to free some high school faculty to be part of this model? It became clear that we would need to be hiring to figure out how we could even coordinate support for them. So who will be delivering instruction to students in Cohort D at the high school? Students will be learning independently and asynchronously, engaging with lessons prepared by third-party platform providers. Edgenuity is the main provider. We purchase a subscription to content that will allow kids to learn primarily through the courses that they have signed up for in the spring on this third-party platform, but not all of the courses that kids signed up for in the spring will be available through Edgenuity, and so Virtual High School or another provider will be used to meet the range of needs that aren't covered by Edgenuity. So I liked what Noel's feature, one of her presentations, was kind of just sharing some statistics. So when we presented last week, we've, in the time since, we've lost about 100 kids who are interested in the fully remote program at the high school levels. We're down to 267. That's 14% of the students at the high school that would be in Cohort D. And yet, we still have to cover the needs of 236 courses. And so I think that gives you a sense of some of the complexity of the work. And, you know, when Mr. Bizidlo and I were working on this last week, I think you can speak to kind of what this looks like with Mr. Nevada, we didn't anticipate this level of movement. And so maybe you can go into detail about what that looks like.
Yeah, sure. So I think anticipating, trying to get schedules ready for the high school, I gave Mr. Nevada some direction last week to pull what we thought we wouldn't have a whole lot of movement with a full remote model. By pulling schedules like that, we create another problem for ourselves that we have to input all the schedules back. And if you just look at the number of courses with the number of students, it's very specific disciplines within that. To highlight it, I ran a couple of numbers this afternoon to give you a sense of the complexity of it. We have 110 sections right now that are at room capacity with six-foot distancing. We have 94 that are over-enrolled, and we haven't gone through it. We probably have 1,200 sections that we have to look at. So if you think about, it's just a mammoth proposal. And I gotta, I gotta give a shout-out to him and Mrs. Wen, who is our Director of School Counseling and the school counselors, who are working feverishly to make sure that students have, meet their graduation requirements, that we eliminate conflicts. And then the balancing of those 1,200-plus sections, we'll go through Mr. Nevada and Mrs. Wen to ensure that we meet capacity regs and setup at the high school. So, yeah, it's a significant, significant challenge. Dr. Sawyer alluded to it earlier. Yeah, people are stressed, but yeah, it's super, super, super complex. And I think the people could say, oh, it's easy to scale up and have high school teachers teach that. And I make the analogy of, we have foreign language teachers that teach very specific disciplines, whether it's Mandarin, or Spanish, or French, or Latin. We can't have a Latin teacher teach chemistry. We can't have a chemistry teacher teach physics, and we can't have a physics teacher teach music or guitar or whatever. So very specialized when you get to the upper levels and create significant challenges, but we're doing our best to work through those.
And we want kids to be able to have the courses that they signed up for to the greatest extent possible.
Yeah, 100%.
And so I think that that's, I just want to make sure we acknowledge the efforts of the School Counseling Department, led by Mrs. Wen and Mr. Nevada, for their efforts in doing this, because even looking at kind of what we're doing from last week to this week, I'm feeling guilty about the complexity that we've visited upon him.
Yeah, well, that's okay. I think part of it is, you hit the nail on the head in working with Ms. Clouder around seeing providers to ensure that we can have corresponding classes that are offered in our program of studies offered to all students has been a challenge. The demand in third-party out there, we're vying for seats across the state and across the country from providers, so there's challenges there. We have enrollment challenges that we're facing tomorrow's number-one list to have some of these cohort students and cohort D enrolled in specialized program that we can't offer through Edgenuity, which I know you'll talk about a little bit, but Mrs. Clouder and I worked a few hours today, or at least a couple hours, on that, trying to get that squared away and prepare budgeting and all that, so.
So in a previous presentation, I talked about the fact that most of the courses that kids signed up for, especially, you know, kind of English 1, English 2, English 3, English 4, for example, those would be covered by Edgenuity. Some of the more difficult ones are the electives that make things so exciting at the high school, things like, you know, the World at War, or Human Anatomy. But we can say at this time that students will get the five core courses, that, you know, each of the content areas, English, math, science, social studies, and health and/or physical education. And that, to the extent possible, will try to find similar electives within the Edgenuity platform or other platforms. For example, astronomy, I think, is, astronomy is an elective at the high school that is also in Edgenuity. And so that could be an option for kids if they have an open space in their schedule.
Right.
So that probably leads to kind of, so what does the lesson look like? And so, as you can see, kids on the left, you see an example of an English lesson. Kids are reading the Scarlet Letter. They're asked to kind of read and reflect on chapters, and then there are various tools that kids could use to access detailed notes, to kind of do some close reading of the passage and annotate that, and then reflect on a general question about the theme of the book. On the right-hand side, you see a lesson in science where, I don't even really understand the science, but they're performing control tests for comparison purposes. And you can see it's essentially a virtual lab. So there are interactive tools that make the work engaging. One of the things that's not shown is that there are also video clips of licensed teachers who are talking and giving kind of a synopsis. And one of the things we've learned from the spring was that students often find it helpful to be able to press replay on a teacher and hear that difficult concept explained again. And at the same time, I want to acknowledge, you know, that does not compare to the skillfulness of our Shrewsbury educators in the classroom. And so I certainly understand when people are thinking, so why would you pick that? And is that it? And then I know that there's been some criticism and concern around, you know, how do kids interact with that platform, and can they essentially kind of game the system? One of the things that I learned in talking to Edgenuity is that they've really specifically limited, kids can't fast-forward through those videos that I've talked about. They have to watch the video before responding to the content or submitting an assignment. Kids do have the ability to retake a test, but if they retook a test, they would not get the same questions. And so some of the features of the platform itself, I think, would lend themselves to supporting students and making more of their learning as they're going through some of the programs. But also, you know, it is an asynchronous, independent program, and that feels really different from what we would typically recommend in terms of a kid's experience at high school. So if we think about, you know, why Edgenuity in terms of a learning management system, it's one of two of the learning management companies vetted by the DESE, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in subsequent slides. Edgenuity is accredited by a variety of public and private organizations, and you can learn more about that directly on their website. One of the things that struck me was that it's been in use in Massachusetts for a long time. First is kind of a way for kids to recover credit and get credit for courses at the high school level. So it seems like it's a good match for the kids in this grade span. And it is taught by licensed educators. Believe it or not, there are some platforms out there that have people who pretend to be educators on TV, and we want our educators on the online platform to be knowledgeable about their content area and available to kind of interact with students. One of the other pieces that we've invested in is kind of this live coaching button within the screen, so that students can kind of get immediate help through a chat function. And those people are not the same people that are featured in the course, but they are able to respond to the content area. So if you're in a math class and you press the help button, you're going to get a math teacher helping you, who can walk you through that content with an interactive whiteboard or something like that. And finally, it's a cost-effective solution, and so I'll talk a little bit about more with that in the next slide. I thought about, you know, how do I explain this? Using an analogy is helpful, I think. So if you're going to buy a car, you know, you think you're going to walk into the lot and see a great variety. You might be drawn to a specific color or specific features. If you're looking for learning management systems, it's really like looking at three similar cars, all the same model, in the sense that the features that make a platform work are pretty common from one vendor to another. And the pieces that you want to look at in terms of a match are kind of what's their track record or their history. And so the reason that we looked at Edgenuity as a preferred product is because of its history in Massachusetts and because it has been reliable over time, like the Honda. So if we switch to the next one, the DESE suggested four remote learning partners. In early August, they announced the kind of the results of their vetting process, and those four remote learning partners really were segmented into two options. So one option is kind of the car with the driver. The Commonwealth Virtual Schools, which would be either the Greenfield Commonwealth Virtual School or Teca Connections Academy, those are courses that come with instructional services. In other words, if I enroll in that course, I get a teacher. They're more expensive, ranging between $350 to $575 per student per semester. So if we looked at that with the kids that we have who have elected for Cohort D, that would run us slightly more than $1 million for the year. On the other hand, if you're looking at a learning management system providers, those do not come with instructional services. You invest in a site license, so for us, the site license would run around $29,000. And then you think about, okay, so if we get the content through a third-party provider, how could we support kids to make sure that we're leveraging that provider to the greatest extent possible? And you can see that we could still invest money in staffing, you know, coordinators that could manage a caseload of students learning remotely for about half the cost of what it would be to buy the programs with the drivers. And the benefit is, we know the drivers. So going with Edgenuity was one of those two options of a learning management system. The other was the Florida Virtual School Global, and they had very similar features. Again, they're like comparing two Hondas. The third was the DESE representative, when I called to say, you know, tell me more about your vetting process, because I wanted to know how they got to these two learning management systems, they said it's a product that was 20 times more than the other two that are listed here. So the DESE in vetting the process was also thinking about the challenge of districts essentially trying to manage two schools. We're managing a hybrid model, because, as everyone knows, we've recommended that it's really good for kids to be back in school, to the extent that we can safely do that. But also, we have to give families the option to be able to continue having their students learn remotely, because there's lots of good reasons that families are very cautious and need to attend to kind of medical needs within the family and keep them remote. So the other piece are more pragmatics, and I'll have Mr. Bizidlo speak to kind of some of that. He alluded to kind of the need to come to a decision quickly because of some of the other pieces that relate to that.
Yeah, so it's essentially, we're starting, we have two schools we're starting up, right? With the same people. I think what's critically important, and I know the school committee talked about this at a previous meeting, is the importance of having students in Cohort D still connected to our school through co-curricular programming and athletics. And those things, I think, are, in our School Counseling Department, are really, really important. I know people make choices based upon their own health considerations and family considerations, and we totally respect that. But in terms of the selection process, we're out of time. And I think part of out of time is, there's just, there's so much complexity with it, and I think we have to take the best, you know, the recommendation is, we picked the best model that we thought would work the best for us, given our resources, our limited resources, and also how do we staff it quickly enough and provide students the connections and support with our people, in supporting their work asynchronously in a really different new environment. So certainly different than the spring, and yet different again. So it's another change for us. And I think what we also looked at is looking at what other communities in the Commonwealth are doing of similar size and similar scope. And I can tell you, meeting with the Midland-Watson League Principals on a regular basis, there's a variety of different models that neighboring schools and towns and communities use. You could be next door, and they're doing something entirely different. I'm sure you all know this. You can move to Eastern Mass, and they're doing something entirely different as well. There's no real one model, in my mind, in terms of who's doing what, but the ones that are looking at full remote are, larger school districts are looking at third parties as a provider, just because of the scope and scale of the offerings that those schools provide. And again, there's a lot of things happening around negotiations and all these things in other communities that we've had to deal with here as well. So it's very simplified, as you well know, in terms of just the complexity of all of it. So those are some of the things when Amy and I met with, trying to figure out how to best get this school up and running and support our students is probably some of the considerations we've talked about.
The final piece about that is really that, from a technology standpoint, it's a technology platform, and so we want to be able to offer ease of use in terms of single sign-on access. And Edgenuity uses Clever, which, as you've heard about when we were talking about some of the learning platforms like ST Math and Freckle, would also enable us to kind of seamlessly integrate some of the iPad work with the online platform. And that was a factor for me, too, is figuring out, so how fast can we transition so that kids have access to the program, provide professional development to staff, and is this a company that will call me back when I have a question? And I tested that out three times, and three times I got a call in less than 24 hours, and that's always a good sign. We haven't had the same experience, for example, with some of the vendors that support us with kind of educator evaluation. And so we want, if we're doing something new, to know that somebody's going to pick up the phone on the other end if we run into a concern for students. Again, Cohort D students are our students, and we want that experience to be as good as it could possibly be. So in order to do that, we looked at So in order to do that, we looked at some of the course offerings. So, do you want to watch?
Yeah, sure. So this is, we, we took Edgenuity's baseline offerings here on the core and publishes in our document we sent out, was that this week? The family's a final document?
Yes.
Thanks, sorry. And the ones with asterisks are, asterix ex them are also courses that they offer for honors credit. There are, when we drilled down deeper at electives and looking at the final count today, they do offer electives that, again, will correspond. So students will get electives in the event that they do switch cohorts, are not happy with the full remote, that they could switch back and be integrated back into our system with the courses that they enrolled in. Intensive work in terms of looking at physical course selection sheets by students and actually tedious kind of time-consuming work, not hard work, just tedious in a sense of the volume and doing that, creating sections in Power School so we can do grades management for Cohort D. So I don't need to get in all those details, but here's what we're offering, kind of the core of what's happening. There are electives that we'll look at to correspond with everyone's schedule. We take them and say, what do you want for elective? Okay, they don't offer that. What's your second choice of elective? They offer that, we'll put you in that. Or third choice elective, they offer that, we'll put you into it. Or don't, some kids may get elective, some kids don't, depending on it. The key for us is to correspond so it aligns with our program of studies. Make sense?
And the courses that are asterisked are courses that have an honors component, and we know that that, that's also really important for kids, particularly kids in the upper levels that are contemplating applying to college. And so that was another thing that we looked at. You'll see from this grid that in terms of foreign languages, in Spanish and French, the first three courses in the series are covered, so the French 1, French 2, French 3. But we have students who have taken French 4 or French 5 because they know that that will make them attractive when they're applying to colleges, for example. They're not interested in the language in the sense that they want an AP, but they want that fourth or fifth year kind of under their belt. And so thinking about how we might do that means we need to look at other vendors. And so that leads to the next slide.
Right. So we looked at AP courses in Edgenuity. On the left-hand side, those are available for our students. And then we've, we also have a contract, as you know, with Virtual High School for, for years. And we've been in close contact with Virtual High School to look at the number of seats that are available and looking at course enrollments. And these are the courses that are offered through Virtual High School, and we can, there are seats available in these courses as of four o'clock today. So tomorrow morning, we're going to start trying to work on this issue of trying to scale up and get people enrolled in this, these as soon as possible so, so we can secure seats to, to offer students courses that they signed up for. Simple as that.
And I think, you know, you'll notice that Latin 1 and 2 is available in Edgenuity, that Latin 3, I think, is available in VHS. But I, the upper level of Latin, it would need to go to yet another vendor.
Right.
And so I think, just thinking about how to satisfy the small portion of kids in Cohort D who are interested in Latin gives you a sense of some of the complexity of what we're talking about. And we want all of our students, Cohort D students or our students, to be able to get the courses that they signed up for. And that means kind of putting that together into a big package. And so the next slide, we'll talk to you a little bit about, so what does that cost? And I'm going to start from the Edgenuity portion of things. If you purchase a site license for Edgenuity, it means two things. One, it means that kids can access the content that they're going to be working through independently in Cohort D. It also means that teachers who are teaching in the hybrid model can access some of those resources, which is kind of exciting to me to think, because as you know, in a hybrid model, some kids will be home for some of those times too. And so thinking about how we might leverage that resource is helpful. It also includes kind of professional development so that we can train the people who are going to be coordinators in the program, and I'll talk a little bit about the job of a coordinator. And then also that coaching add-on that we talked about, that button within the window so that kids could get immediate help as they're working through an assignment. So the total for that would be $28,600. Not all courses are covered, especially the AP courses and some of the language courses. So if we look at VHS, which Mr. Bizidlo just talked about, we need 25 seats for additional AP courses, given our latest numbers. That's going to cost around $20,000. And then finally, the upper-level language classes, particularly in Mandarin and Latin, but also for French 4 and 5, especially the honors sections and Spanish 4 and 5, aren't covered in Edgenuity. And so we would need to partner with Middlebury Interactive, which is another, kind of a collaboration between Middlebury College, is known for their language courses, and Fuel Ed, which is a virtual school, to support those kids. And that would cost an additional $5,600. So that the total, as you can see, is 515,421. And that's roughly half of what it would cost if we bought the model that comes with a teacher for every course. So students learning online, and this is just a snapshot of kind of what that might look like in a discussion board, will have to be accountable for attending every day and will receive grades in order to receive full credit. We know that not all Shrewsbury High School courses are available to students in the third-party program, and yet we're thinking of these students as Shrewsbury students. And there are some things, like Common Assessments at the high school at certain levels that we want them to take. And so we think about how we're going to meet that need. And there's a number of students representing four grades that are going to need some support, and yet we know to run the hybrid model, we're going to have staff that are going to be fully engaged supporting those, those students. So how would we provide some support to kids so that we could make sure that the quality of the experience they have is, is good, even though they won't have a live, interactive teaching experience or a Shrewsbury teacher kind of leading them through the coursework? And, and so part of that is kind of recommending that kids invest in, thinking about following a schedule, whether or not they have to be reporting live to a teacher, making sure that they are kind of holding themselves accountable for kind of working through the coursework every day, because then we know that the development of a routine is really important. And, you know, making sure that as students are working their way through the, the program, that they're also making sure that they're engaged actively in what they're doing. So just as in the classroom, we know how important it is to take notes, to pause, to reflect, to kind of test your understanding, those same things would be really important in a virtual environment. Also really important to stay on pace. It's, it's tempting, I think, if you don't have to show up. We learned in the spring that sometimes students would kind of sleep in. And making sure that there's a regular routine, especially for teenagers, I think will keep everybody on track. And finally, that issue of avoiding plagiarism is really important. And I thought, Mr. Bizidlo, you had talked to me about the experience, what we have learned about from VHS.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. In, in any high school environment, it's a game of cat and mouse. And I think when you have the internet and you can Google everything, it becomes how, how you stay one step ahead of people. And then how do you create authentic assessments that can't be Googled? I think when we offer standardized testing, sometimes at the high school, that's by one of our publishing houses that we use, students can find that potential answers to a quiz or assessment or worksheet online. I mean, it's, it's, it's not super, kids aren't super savvy, or it doesn't take a super savvy person to kind of look at that. So trying to embed some of the work that we're doing around Common Assessments and how do we supplement some of the things that are happening for remote, the Cohort D kids with our coordinators and looking at baseline assessments given by directors. So it's a kind of marrying a little bit of both worlds, but there are, I think when we look at plagiarism and, and people can say, oh, well, people can easily find this on the internet or find that on the internet. You can find really whatever you want on the internet. That's been our experience at the high school, and I think that's part of the challenge of, of some of the challenges that high school teachers have faced with the advent of technology. So.
So this just gives you a sense about kind of the queuing that kids would get as they made their way through the coursework, stop and take notes, make sure you're thinking about vocabulary, and there's some built-in tools within there to help kids kind of highlight and underline and look up words and kind of practice them. There's transcripts that can be read out loud. There are examples of kind of guided notes that kids could use to kind of scaffold their understanding. And as you can see, this is an example I shared that shows how kids could annotate the text even though they're working remotely online. And that picture at the top right-hand corner of the bottom shows a teacher who's actually kind of explaining what they're asked to, to do as they're taking notes in the lesson. So although this is a lesson about author's viewpoint, they're teaching kids to kind of look at the text, to kind of see examples of where viewpoint is understood. So if you forward one more time. The other piece is that there, because it is a learning management system, there are pieces built into the system that give kids kind of a big-picture view of their progress. You've completed this assignment, you're kind of behind or off pace in this one. Here are the things on the right-hand side that you need to do. But one of the things that's really important is that these things live within the online platform. And so kids need to connect to the platform every day if they want to stay on track, because they'll only see those signals if they log into the platform. And so for that reason, we think it's really important that there's somebody who is serving as the teacher of records actually required by Edgenuity. So to their credit, you know, they, if you're not going to choose the, the model that comes with a teacher, they very much insist that there's somebody who is a teacher of record to monitor kids' attendance, to make sure that they are making progress, that, and then we've added some other tasks that a coordinator would kind of hold extra help sessions for kids and/or office hours, just as in the hybrid model, students could get help at the end of the day, serve as a point of contact for students and parents, or if needed, a liaison to the school counseling department or assistant principals and leadership team at the high school. The assignments that are given online include some more complex tasks like lab reports or papers. And although there is kind of an automatic grammar grader within it, I certainly am not comfortable if my student was learning fully remotely, if they got an automatic grade for a paper just based on grammar. And so some of the complex assignments that are in the task will need to be reviewed by somebody we think of as a coordinator. And then we'd need somebody to maintain grades either in the third-party platform, if it syncs through Clever to Power School, or within Power, Power Grade itself, so that we can make sure that students get progress reports and report cards as they would in the hybrid model. And also, we want parents to be able to have a go-to person to communicate with. Again, students in Cohort D are Shrewsbury students, and we want them to have a good So the coordinators we're thinking would represent teams of four, and each team member would represent a content area so that they'd have a caseload. And Mr. Bizidlo, maybe you explain this a little bit more skillfully than I would.
Yeah, sure. So we, we looked at taking teams and doing almost a lower house, upper house model where you have grades nine and 10. We've got a team of four educators, nine, 10, and a team of four educators that are responsible for grades 11 and 12, and they can work together to help, in the core, to help coordinate, monitor, and rely on each other to ensure there's continuity and fidelity in what happens. And circling back with our student support teams and also our school counseling department and doing a lot of communication with students and families. And I, the third bullet there, again, is really, really important for us. And again, third and fourth in terms of connecting students to their in-school activities or even online virtual activities, whether it's a virtual club meeting or an in-person club or activities such as the fall play or academic or athletic teams. We need those kids in Cohort D to be part of our community as well, and they certainly are, and we, we welcome them. And also participating in School G groups. School G is, is our LMS at the high school, which pushes out a lot of information to students and manages their coursework, coursework and courses. So I think part of that is a really good communication tool for people to be connected and engaged with the, the culture and community at the high school.
So one question that's come up is if the whole district must be fully remote, what happens in Cohort D? One of the complexities of using more than one learning management vendor is that they have different configurations. So VHS would be a longer assignment for some courses than Edgenuity, which was done semester by semester. And so, while it may be possible that students in Cohort D would consider, continue with the same learning program because they're already remote, it might also be that we want to bring them into, if it, depending on the timing, into the same cohort with everyone, just as we were in the spring. And so I guess that's a way of saying there's two options there.
Yeah, we need flexibility. It's the bottom line. We need flexibility.
Yeah. And the final question that we anticipate people asking is, you know, what if, having heard this, I want to switch to the hybrid model? The deadline for switching has passed, and so we would need at this point a period of at least several weeks to kind of figure out how we recalibrate, because as Mr. Bizidlo explained earlier, there needs to be a waiting period for us to figure out how all these dominos kind of fall in and relate to one another. And right now, we're very mindful of the importance of keeping social distancing within the hybrid model and make sure we balance those sections so that when we, you know, we can open school on time. So again, you know, I, I know that whenever you're looking at a learning management system, it's certainly possible to find on Twitter or on the internet people who have been unhappy with that experience, and I just want to acknowledge that. I think virtual, the existence of virtual schools and COVID have meant that people are ramping up and making those programs better. But a program that has an instructor built with it and a learning management system are two different things. And we're trying to strike the right balance with coordinators supporting kids so that we can maintain as much as possible both academic connections and social connections with our high school, and in that way, kind of bring a better program to the students and families experiencing Cohort D. But I do know that, you know, if you look on Twitter, you can find parents who find that it's not a great experience, and you can find kids that are saying, it's just so much work, I have to work so hard to do this. And I'm kind of happy to see that from kids, because that's really, we have high expectations for our students.
And if I may, quite frankly, I think we can all appreciate how much slower things are online in our own work lives. For whatever reason, it seems like Zoom and meetings online and even my own coursework through graduate, postgraduate coursework is extremely tedious online versus in person, in my opinion. So when people talk about the rigor of it, everything you say, think has to be written down, posted, and then recorded and reflected upon and graded. So I challenge sometimes people who say, I'd much rather do something online than in person. For me personally, in-person's a lot better than doing it online, because we have these conversations, they're somewhat organic. When you're in this asynchronous world, there's a lot of written work that has to happen in order to meet the benchmarks and standards. So, you know, it's, it's my opinion. There's, there's differences of opinion, but that's kind of my experience with it as well.
So we're happy to take questions if people have them or share, you know, hear concerns that you've heard as school committee members about people who are contemplating Cohort D. Great, thank you. Jason?
Just to start off with, as you alluded to, there has been a lot of unfortunate social media chatter around Edgenuity and its reputation online. For that reason, I'm wondering if you can expand a bit on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's review process. I know that in our report, we have some information about a panel of, I think, about 40 educators that went through.
Yes.
So I'm wondering if you can talk about what it is, who comprised that panel, what they were looking for, maybe if you have any details as to how Edgenuity was, was able to meet those standards.
Yes, there's a diverse group of educators. I don't know if the community would be aware, but there's an initiative within the DESE called Curate where they're trying to essentially take the approach to curriculum and make it more uniform across the state. So that, for example, if I'm looking at a reading program for Shrewsbury, that I would be able to draw on a, a group of vetted programs, and that each district kind of looking at curriculum review wouldn't be starting from scratch. So there were representatives from Curate, that group. There were representatives of teachers and educators as well as administrators. There were probably 45 people, because I asked this question of the, of Desi when I was looking at it, who kind of reviewed these, these programs as a panel and then made recommendations. I think, you know, of all of the learning systems they looked at, they recognized that what they want for kids is a more robust live teaching experience. And so in some ways, kind of the definition of the remote means that there isn't a live experience. But they also were looking to see what was available in a grade span, what was the progression of the courses, what was the content, who was putting them together, making sure that they were taught by licensed people, even if they weren't live people? What were some of the functionality of the tools in there? How well did they adapt to kids who might need a second read or notes, note structure, things like that? And so there were, they landed on looking at, from the field, three of them, and then they eliminated one of them because they were just really expensive. But I, I hope that answers your question.
And, and to clarify, if I could, it was, it was really two providers that Desi came forward with. So this, to, to your analogy about a car lot, this was not as if he went out on the open market and started Googling yourself or any provider we would just go sign a contract with. This was a matter of working through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Right. They had looked at that. So if you think about this big funnel of whatever's out there, they had kind of had the big satellite dish, looking at all of the things and narrowed it down to, these are the ones that we think make the most sense for districts in the Commonwealth. We want them to be aligned with the curriculum. And they had published kind of this expectation of... And they had published kind of this expectation of, um, remote learning has got to be more rigorous. And so they were also looking at it through the lens of, would this be, enable, um, you know, that degree of rigor that we are looking for as we ramped up remote learning.
And just, if I could just one more follow-up for either you, Ms. Clutter, or Mr. Bizzillo. Uh, on the coordinator position, if there were hypothetically a student who was falling behind, uh, with their performance, or with engaging with remote learning, how might that intervention from the coordinator, uh, appear? Is it, you know, they're, they're gonna send an email to the student? Would it be a phone call? What, what, what type of, of red flag would go off? You know, obviously, I assume that inevitably some kids are gonna fall behind, and then they'll catch up again, but, you know, what's, what's also gonna be maybe the, the trigger warning that, that somebody needs to step in?
Right, so these coordinators are gonna really have to monitor closely the caseload, what's happening within a team, and to coordinate with each other between the cord, the disciplines, all, all teachers. And they'll share information in terms of progress monitoring there. But additionally, I mean, a lot of the coordination's gonna be communication with families. I mean, daily check-ins, attendance, looking at progress monitoring. Within this platform, you have, uh, you have, um,
It's like a, a dashboard that allows you to see, you know, where kids are.
Right, so you can, you can understand where kids, how kids are progressing, what's gonna need attention. But quite frankly, uh, our expectation is going to be that people are gonna have to make, you know, they'll have to make phone calls, they will have to send emails. It'll be the students, it'll be the parents, it'll be the school counselors. So, this is a heavy, it's pretty intensive communication, uh, position in my mind, and we need that in this position, given the circumstance we're in. So, that's how I envision it. Probably a little bit stronger than, uh, in-person, because I think when you're in-person, you get this face-to-face communication with people, and that's not necessarily gonna happen all the time, so it could be Zoom meetings. I mean, any, any number of those modes will, will have to work for us.
And just, just related, just, just to clarify, to maybe just drive the point home, even though obviously we're not fortunate enough to have these kids being taught by Shrewsbury Public Schools educators, there's gonna be Shrewsbury Public Schools educator who's watching their progress through this system.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, yes, yes. And they know, and they know our systems, and they know, they know our procedures, and they know who to turn to when they need support, or students need support. So, that's kind of the key for us. They kind of know our inner workings, which is very, very helpful, I think, and a benefit to the way we've constructed it.
Thank you.
And I think it's a credit to, to you, Mr. Bizzillo, that we've been able to find, uh, coordinators who are, in fact, teachers interested in doing this work. Um, so, uh, you know, that was something we weren't sure we were gonna be able to, you know, we're thinking, okay, so if we, given our staffing situation, if we identify a coordinator from the teaching ranks, then we have to backfill that position with a long-term sub. We'd rather have a long-term sub in the role of a, uh, in-person instruction than a long-term sub in the coordinator position. Um, so I, I, I think the, the strength of the coordinator group is gonna be key. And the intervention would be different for a student who is maybe not making progress in any of the courses, than a student who's having a hard time in an English course, but not necessarily the other ones. So, um, I think the, the whole gamut will, will need to be considered.
Thank you.
You answered one of my questions, is about, well, whether we already identified some of these positions. So, thank you, um, and that, and that they're sort of individuals known to us, not new to our, to our systems as, as much as is possible. Maybe you could speak to, um, how, um, given the virtual platform, how do we support, uh, young people with, um, IEPs and special ed needs? And what, what parents might expect that would, that would look like?
Sure, so, uh, we're, it's on my desk. It's, uh, we, we, I think we have someone identified. We may, I think, maybe Ms. Bell Cesar can help me. I know we've identified someone. I think we just have to do some communication on what that's gonna look like, but in terms of service delivery, those services are gonna be delivered on a student's IEP grids, uh, remotely. And we've actually have someone that knows our students who, uh, we've talked about, um, provocational stuff of looking at software packages in order to meet goals within IEPs. So, again, there's another complexity there, but the short answer is yes. We have, uh, services for both ELL and also special education students within that cohort that we've dedicated, um, and will continue to refine that in the coming days. Week-ish.
I mean, part of it is that the, who is in this cohort changed by 100 kids between last week and this week. So, we have to dig deep and look at the profiles of individual kids.
Yeah, we're on that. Mrs. De Leon is, uh, the director of special education at the high school. As we've met, uh, yesterday about that, and I think, it was yesterday afternoon, we had a, was that yesterday afternoon? We had a conference call. So, um, yeah, we're keenly aware of that and working through the details, so that's, that will happen, yeah.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Questions, comments?
Thank you. Uh, this is a lot of work, and I'm glad that you were able to really explain it more in detail. And I agree with Mr. Palich, there has been some social media comments. And one thing, Ms. Clutter, I'd ask if you could speak to, is, one of the concerns is, well, why can't the Shrewsbury High School teachers who are teaching hybrid, the two cohorts, why can't they just also teach remote at the same time?
If you've ever been on a Zoom where the technology isn't functioning, I think that right there gives you a sense of what that might look like if you're managing a group of kids in front of you, and also a group of kids checking in online. I think part of it is just a teaching and learning question, that, um, there are different skill sets. And, um, you know, I think Dr. Sawyer has said, it, one of the things that was really different about opening day is you don't, you can't really read your audience on Zoom the same way. And so you'd have to put some techniques into relating online. It couldn't just be that they're tuning in remotely, because you don't really know who is actually there versus, and we learned in the spring that some kids kind of logged in and then, um, weren't really attending, because when the class or the Zoom was over, that student was still, was still there, or their name was still there. And I think so, a, a skillful teacher would want to interact with the kids who are, uh, at home, and also the kids in front of them, and balancing the, both of those things, even if the technology is working right, would, would be really a considerable task. Um, do you want to add anything about that?
No, it's, it's, again, it's very complex, and I think it's living in, what, our teachers are gonna be living, almost like, it would be living in three worlds, a remote world, having asynchronous students working when they're not in the classroom, and having, working with students in the classroom. It's, I think that's a lot of balancing our teachers would have to do, as very demanding as it is, changing the modality of how we're operating, so certainly a challenge. And I, I can, I appreciate the question. Um, the good news is with edgenuity, there's also the idle monitor, uh, like we have an Alex, uh, where we can see how many people are idle. It logged on, but idle and not working through. So, that's one of the, the features on the dashboard that'll be helpful for our coordinators to take a look at.
And I think, you know, it's not just about the teacher experience, but also the research for the student experience is that logging in and tuning in, um, you know, like live streaming into the classroom is not effective, um, in terms of growing student understanding. And it's really tempting to say, well, if I, my student just has access to that class, then they'll be able to benefit, and the research just doesn't bear that out. Um, and then finally, I think there's this, um, this aspect of how much time we want kids to spend engaging passively versus engaging actively in looking through material. And so, we want certainly a mix of videos of live teaching, because that what, that's what will happen in the platform. But we also want moments where kids are kind of stopping and reflecting and taking notes, because we know that it's really important to chunk instruction and have kids respond. And if you have a group of kids zooming in, in a short class period, you have to think about, what part do you want them to be zooming in for and listening? Um, but certainly, the whole class is not going to be a lecture. So, you have to think about, what's the experience of them if you're tuning in? You know, like, per share, what are they doing? And then when do they come back on again? I think if you kind of think that through, um, you can kind of envision why that wouldn't be such a high rate of learning return for kids on the other end.
Great, thank you for clarifying that. And I also want to speak to, um, I think some of the comments talked about, um, not understanding that this may have been, um, the remote model would not have Shrewsbury teachers. And I think back to July, when we started talking about remote, we talked about that being a possibility, just looking at the logistics at the high school and the, the number of classes. I even, last week, Dr. Sawyer mentioned that, you know, we were looking to see if we might need to hire outside. So, I think we've been talking about it, we've been very transparent about that with the community. And there, um, why would we penalize any group of students? The Cohort D students are going to get the same education that our other students will get. And is it different? Is it gonna be offered in a different way? Absolutely. But the goal of our district remains the best educational services we can provide to any student regardless of the cohort that they're in. So, I just want to thank you. I know it's a lot of work, and I know parents do have some anxiety and concern about how this will work for those students. But, um, we're gonna work through it. Again, we're in it together, and this is the best intentions for everyone. And parents do need the choice for remote, so it's going to work out, and we'll work through it.
There's nothing more important to parents than the, what experience their students are having. So, I certainly understand all those concerns. I think our investment in the role of the coordinators is our best effort to try to really live what we mean by that, you know, cohort, students in Cohort D are Shrewsbury students, and we want to give them the support to the extent that we can. And as, at the same time, we are essentially running two different systems. Um, and so our capacity is limited.
Great, thank you. Dr. Sawyer, any comments or questions?
Uh, first want to thank, excuse me, Ms. Clutter and Mr. Bizzillo, and, uh, the team at the high school, Mr. Nevada, and Ms. Wen in particular. Uh, I am glad that we're going to have, uh, a number of Shrewsbury educators who are gonna move into these roles. I do think that that's the linchpin of this working well. We, we all do have the same goal here. You know, it's, there is, we want our students to be as successful as possible. Uh, we have a re, a reality of the situation that it's not optimum. We have limited resources. We have to run, you know, multiple programs in a different way simultaneously. Uh, and, you know, I think if you ask most people, well, if you're gonna open up a virtual school, you know, how much time and years and resources do you need to plan that? You know, we're doing it in, over the course of a few months. Uh, and I, and I think that, you know, again, I think we're, we're landing in a place where we can provide the kind of curriculum experiences, um, and the kind of support for students that will help them, um, gain the skills they need. It does not serve anyone well, including us as a school district. And purely, obviously, we wanted, we're, we're committed to doing what's right for kids. Um, but even if you look at it from a pure perspective of, you know, that we're concerned about our performance as an organization, you know, hopefully, sometime in the not-too-distant future, we're back in school under normal circumstances. If these students aren't well-served and they fall behind, that's gonna affect the success of our organization. None of us want that. Most importantly, because of the, the well-being, the educational well-being, and the overall well-being of our students. Um, our commitment is that we do not want kids falling through the cracks, to use the cliche that we all hear. Uh, that's what our commitment is, and by, you know, investing essentially a half a million dollars, that is really hard to, to come by, and some of those dollars are gonna have to come from COVID funds from the federal government. I am hopeful the federal government will get its act together and do another infusion of funding for public education, because if they don't, every public school district's gonna be in trouble come, come the springtime. Uh, but we will work through this to the, you know, we, we believe we can manage this. Um, but making that investment, this is not about, here's an online option, let's put the kids over there, and we'll see you at the end of the semester. Um, you know, that's not the situation here. By having, you know, nine Shrewsbury hired educators connecting with these kids on an ongoing basis, um, that is the way that we'll make sure that kids' experiences with this, with this platform are fruitful. Um, and depending on how it works, our, our goal will be, how can we make as many Shrewsbury connections? And looking at, are there ways to fill in additional Shrewsbury types of curriculum experiences or assessments, um, as we go? And, and I'd be lying if I said we've got that all figured out, because we just don't, because we've never done this before. But I think if we put these building blocks in place, we have good people doing the work, and we have a systematic approach where we're paying attention to how kids are doing, um, that's how we make sure kids don't fall through the cracks. And that's our commitment to our families, that's our commitment to our students. Uh, you know, we're, we're, we're procuring the tools we think are gonna work the best for us in this situation. I deeply appreciate that there are people who are skeptical. I deeply appreciate that there are people who feel like this might not be the best choice. And I get it, all of us can, I'm sure there's things online. If you Google Shrewsbury Superintendent, you can find out that I'm a pretty awful educational leader. I'm sure there's some really bad reviews of me out there. I'm sure there's some bad reviews of Shrewsbury High School generally. I'm sure there's some bad reviews of whatever, whatever the highest rated car is, you can go online and find some really bad reviews of it. I think, again, with the support we're providing, um, and I think that, you know, again, we, we, we are basing this on some thoughtful approaches, uh, and I trust the professional judgment that Ms. Clutter, Mr. Bizzillo, and their team, uh, bring to the equation. There's been no reason, based on past practice, that we should doubt that professional judgment. Um, that said, you know, we, we just, you know, we, we cannot predict exactly how this is going to work. We will continue to adjust and refine to do the very best we can for our kids. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer, and thank you again for presenting.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, under new business, uh, we are going to have a vote to ratify a memorandum of agreement with the Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit A. And this is the hybrid education model. Because of the significant changes to our educational model required by the pandemic, the school committee engaged in bargaining with the SEA, who represent professional educators in our district, in order to craft an agreement regarding working conditions and expectations related to the hybrid learning model being used for the upcoming school year. You all have a copy of the MOA in your packet. Are there any questions or comments first from the committee? I've had a chance to go through it. Anything from Dr. Sawyer or Ms. Malone?
Um, I'll just start by saying I, I appreciate the, the SEA's leadership team who worked collaboratively with the school committee members, Ms. Fritz and Mr. Wensky, and the administrative team, uh, to come up with the memorandum of agreement. I think it hits on a lot of areas that are critically important, obviously, to make sure that, um, we're providing the, the safest environment, uh, under the circumstances, and minimizing risk, um, and focusing on what's best for our students by, by providing supports for our staff to be able to work effectively with our students. So, uh, with that, I, I certainly recommend ratification. Uh, appreciate that, uh, you know, the SEA membership ratified this last Friday. And, uh, again, and in particular, want to thank Ms. Malone for coordinating the efforts, uh, and making sure that we're able to move through this process, um, as well as we were able to. So, um, it is my recommendation that the school committee ratify.
Thank you.
No, no further comments, other than just to again thank this SEA leadership, who really, as you and Mr. Wensky know, really hung with us and worked through some tricky issues, and continued to advocate for their membership at the same time, really working collaboratively with us. And, uh, that is very much appreciated.
Yeah, and I echo those sentiments. I think we are very fortunate to have the relationship we do with our union groups, in particular, the SEA. Um, we had a lot of meetings. Thank you, Bob, for setting up Zoom meetings multiple times a week. And, you know, again, for anybody watching, this is something else the leadership team had on their plate. We're, and we spent a lot of time on this, so a lot of hours were put in by the leadership team. And also, uh, uh, thank you to the SEA leadership. They were great to work with. We always can work through things. It's a very honest and frank conversation.
Yeah, I, I would echo those sentiments. I appreciate the partnership of the SEA leadership team, uh, sharing, uh, the thoughts and concerns of their members, uh, through many, uh, many hours of meetings. Uh, also, thanks to our central office leadership, Ms. Malone, and, uh, Dr. Sawyer, uh, Mr. Collins, and everybody involved. This was a, a, a team effort for sure, and, uh, appreciate the open and honest dialogue.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion that the committee vote to ratify the enclosed memorandum of agreement with the Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit A, regarding the hybrid education model at the Shrewsbury Public Schools?
So moved.
Second.
In a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have our minutes. From our school committee meetings held on August 6th, August 18th, August 19th, August 25th, and August 26th, 2020, and the school committee's workshop held on August 8th, 2020. Any corrections? I, I have a couple. On August 6th, under, on part, uh, Roman numeral three, just, um, change it to Chalmers, it's just spelt wrong. And on August 18th, Mr. Wensky is listed as assistant chairperson. Just change that to vice-chairperson. I think that was it. Nope, August 25th, also change it from assistant to vice-chairperson. And August 8th, again, change it for, uh, Mr. Wensky from assistant to vice-chairperson.
Let me move these other minutes as amended.
Okay, and we can have those marked as accepted as amended. And there again, minute, meeting minutes for August 6th, 2020, August 8th, 2020, August 18th, 2020, August 19th, 2020, August 25th, 2020, and August 26th, 2020. Thank you. We do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant-in-aid requirements, Purpose 7. Open Meeting Law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 222FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Purpose 3. The Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit A, Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit B, Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit A, Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Shrewsbury Cafeteria workers, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and will return to open session only for the purpose of adjournment for the evening. We have a motion.
Second.
Roll call vote is required. Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Palich?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Myself.
Aye. Thank you, and good night.